The Monday, July 25th, 2022, meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:01 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you.
Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have no announcements this evening. That brings us to our first public comment of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when making a public comment.
Hi, I'm Mary Lou Blumpquist, 1530 West Ridge here in Marquette, and I'm here representing the Marquette Area Sister City Partnership with a reminder for folks of a public reception next week, October, August 4th, at Peter White Public Library from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. You may have seen these eye-catching posters around town, and we hope to have a good crowd because we will be hosting a Consular General for Japan, whose office is in Detroit, and he has responsibilities for a lot of things, Japanese, but also for the Sister City program. So he is going to be here as a guest of our Marquette Sister City Partnership on the 3rd and 4th of August. He is a long-career diplomat. He has been in many places around the world and was recently sent to the Detroit Council Office. We are hoping that we can have a good turnout. As you know, COVID has kind of kept us apart from our sister cities for the last three years, so this is kind of a way of getting back in touch with our sisters in, our sister city in Higashiomi, Japan, and he is one of the connections between us and our sister city in Japan. As you know, our city has had a relationship with Higashiomi for 43 years. This city signed a charter with Higashiomi in 1979 when Mr. W.R. Merrick was Consular, was the mayor of the council, and we have had a continuous relationship since then, broken only by COVID. So we're hoping to have another delegation next summer, if COVID is willing, and that will be a delegation of people coming, going to Japan from Marquette. So it's important to get the interest now so that we can have a good delegation by the time we go next summer. We appreciate the condolences that you're, that is on the agenda tonight that you will be sending to the mayor of our sister city, and we appreciate the city's support over the years, and we hope that we get a good turnout to welcome the Consular General and also to celebrate 43 years of friendship with our sister city in Japan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Anyone else? All right, seeing no further public comment, public comment is now closed. And just to note that our chance to respond is either during commission comments or on an agenda item. Thank you. All right, up first, we have a presentation. We have recognition of appreciation for Donald "Fast Fender" or Diver Don. I have a certificate here, and we'll go over to the side podium. Are you Diver Don?
Yes.
Come on over here, please.
Come on over this way. I don't think I've had a chance to meet you. Okay.
We'll come on over here, Diver Don. We have a certificate here, and we have an item later on our agenda to help your newly-formed organization with a raffle, but I know that you've spent countless hours organizing volunteers, trucks, boats, and scuba equipment, and I know you were a diver yourself, to go down and remove, what is it, seven tons of tires?
Eleven tons.
Eleven tons of tires, even two refrigerators. What else you got?
Batteries, you name it, just things that don't belong in the lake. Our next cleanup is August 6th, so if you're available, just bring some clothes and boots and try to put you to work.
All right. Sounds good. Well, thank you. We appreciate all your conservation efforts for Lake Superior and our harbor, and look forward to the items that we have to give. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Don, you can go ahead and take a seat, but if commissioners have questions or comments, now would be a good time to do that. We can call them back up if we need to, but you can take a seat for now. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to point out to the full audience, I think, that, you know, we have various state and federal agencies that are working extremely hard to protect the Great Lakes, and we know why, because the Great Lakes contains 21% of all of the fresh water in the world, and Lake Superior alone has 10% of all of the surface fresh water in the world in our Great Lake. So we certainly understand the importance of the cleanliness of the lake and maintaining it, and fighting for that because it's so critically important to all of us. And certainly, there's many federal and state agencies that each have a piece of that and work, I think, very diligently in trying to reach that objective. But we also have 501(c)(3)'s, in other words, nonprofit groups and agencies that are doing the same thing. On Lake Superior, for example, we have the Lake Superior Marine Museum Association working out of Duluth. We have the Great Lakes Shipwreck Historical Society working out of the Whitresh Bay and Sault Ste. Marie. We have the Great Lakes Shipwreck Preservation Society that's also working out of Minnesota that uniquely tries to locate shipwrecks and preserve them in any way they can underwater. Again, all working not only to save the environmental health of the lakes, but to help tell the story of the Great Lakes, that story that I don't think is told well enough that enough people truly understand it. But locally, we also have groups like the Lake Superior, or rather, the Superior Watershed Foundation, the Marquette Maritime Museum, for example, and now we have the group that's established by Don and his company, or rather, his cohorts, to do exactly the same thing, to work to preserve the Great Lakes, and in this case, our small segment of it. Now, the reason these groups I mentioned are important at the local level. We understand the big picture and we understand what the big agencies can do, but when you get down to what locally has to happen and has to be done, it's groups like, groups rather like those that Diver Don has put together, that really is where the work gets done. It's really when things happen is when people do it locally. So I, Your Honor, I truly commend the, certainly Diver Don, but also the organization that we're supporting within the consent agenda for them to be able to continue to do this very good work. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Other commissioners? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. That was a really nice list of things that are happening on the lake, but, you know, on a personal note, I really love unintentional heroes, and kind of in my eyes, that's what you are, Diver Don. You have an interest, you have a talent, which is scuba diving, and you have an interest, which is cleaning up our lake, and the two of them have come together, and I don't think four years ago, when people observed you just picking up garbage in a little bag and taking it up to the top of the, up to the shore, I don't think anybody, especially you, realized what kind of a social cleanup movement that you inspired. And, you know, it's very much appreciated. Everybody loves what you're doing for our lake, and people love watching the drama on, well, you'll see it on August 6th if you haven't seen it before, bringing up all those tires and the refrigerators and things like that. So our little certificate of appreciation, you know, is just a simple piece of paper that just doesn't seem adequate enough, but there's a lot of gratitude that goes into that piece of paper. Thank you so much.
Commissioners? Thank you again. Diver Don, you are a hero and well-known person in this community, and we look forward to seeing continued efforts on August 6th. Thank you. All right, up next, we do have the consent agenda. This will require a roll call vote. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
And we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? No. All right, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, new business, item number three, City Manager and City Attorney Performance Evaluation Process. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The city charter requires the city commission to conduct an annual performance review of both the city manager and the city attorney. In past years, the mayor has appointed three commissioners to serve on a committee to review and compile the city managers' and city attorneys' performance evaluations and make a recommendation regarding any adjustment to their compensation or terms of employment. Both the city managers' and city attorneys' contracts will expire September 30th, 2022. Fiscal effect: none by this action. Recommendation: appoint three commissioners to serve on a committee to review and compile the city managers' and city attorneys' performance evaluations and to make a recommendation regarding future terms of employment and compensation. Alternatives: as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we authorize the mayor to appoint three commissioners to serve on a committee to review and compile the city managers' and city attorneys' performance evaluations and to make a recommendation regarding future terms of employment and compensation.
Do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion?
No, I was lucky enough to serve on that last year, and I thought it was great, and I'm really excited to see who you pick this year to further make sure that we are meeting all the goals that we have set out for our employees.
Pro Tem Mayor?
Nothing further than that.
Any other discussion from the commission?
I just wanted to add that I think normally the timeline on this is a little different, but we wanted to make sure with the contracts that we have for our city manager and city attorney that we got this on the agenda ahead of time, had plenty of time to review, and, I mean, by all, my account, things are going well, but we want to make sure that we set specific goals and review all the details of the contract. So if this does get approved, I would intend on appointing Commissioner Bonzal, Commissioner Stonehouse, and Commissioner Davis to this committee. Thank you, three, for your willingness to serve in that capacity. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Item four, our new business YMCA Facility Use Agreement. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. For years, the city clerk's office has utilized the gymnasium at the YMCA as a polling location. Historically, the city has paid the YMCA $1,000 for each election, and voters from city precincts five, six, and seven have voted at Election Day precincts in the organization's gymnasium located at 1420 Pine Street. There are generally two elections per year in the city, though this number can range from one to four in a given year. Staff recently began a conversation with the YMCA in an attempt to guarantee this facility will be available for election use into the foreseeable future. The result of these conversations is the attached facility use agreement. The agreement, reviewed by the city clerk and city attorney, will allow the city access to the facility from noon the day prior to each election day until 10:00 AM the day following each election day. For use of the facility, the city will pay $1,000 for the August 2022 election and $1,400 for all subsequent elections. This agreement will continue through the end of 2024 and can then be renewed for four additional years. Fiscal effect: the city will pay the YMCA $1,000 for the August 2022 election and $1,400 for each subsequent election. Recommendation: approve the facility use agreement and direct the mayor and clerk to sign. Alternatives: as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the facility use agreement and direct the mayor and clerk to sign.
And Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Bonzal?
Nope, I think it's critically important that we still have this facility available for one of the most important services the city provides, so, and it seems that while there is a small increase, it's reasonable.
Commissioner Hanley, you have some discussion?
I do. This, it may seem very weird, but why don't we use the Lakeview for this?
You know, Kyle has some insight on that, I believe, or City Clerk has some insight on this one.
So I've thought that in the past, but ICE is in for probably half of the elections we would need it for, so.
Makes sense.
We've just never tried it.
I, I, well, I mean, I just, I know we have, like, extra areas there, too, like, we have the conference room at the Lakeview and things like that that could be utilized for this. I understand it's only $1,400, and I totally agree with you doing this. I just wanted to make sure that if we have a free spot feasibly.
Yeah, I think, we've discussed it, and I think the amount of space we would need for the precincts that we would need to put in there, we would not have that space available at every election.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Last on new business, number five, Market Township PA 425 Agreement. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Act 425 of 1984 authorizes two local units of government to share tax revenues resulting from new or expanding development within the areas of their jurisdictions. This agreement allows a temporary transfer of jurisdiction for land not exceeding 50 years from one municipality to another in place of annexation. The agreement must involve an economic development project defined by the act as land and existing or planned improvement suitable for use by an industrial or commercial enterprise or housing development or the protection of the environment, including but not limited to groundwater or surface water. Marquette Township has approached the city of Marquette to request the exploration of a 425 agreement for a potential housing project that will be located on Forestville Road. While a majority of the development will be located in Marquette Township, a portion totaling approximately 29 acres will be located within the city of Marquette. J.M. Longyear, the developer, will be applying for a planned unit development through Marquette Township for the project, along with a request to the township for sewer, water, and municipal services. Under the 425 agreement, the portion of property located in the city will be included in the township PUD application. Due to the lack of direct city utilities or road access to the development, city staff supports the implementation of a 425 agreement. As a consideration of the 425 agreement, the city will receive a portion of tax revenue generated by the development. Approval from both the city of Marquette and Marquette Township will be required if a 425 agreement is successfully negotiated. Fiscal effect: none by this action. Recommendation: authorize the city manager to negotiate a PA 425 agreement with Marquette Township for the long-year housing development on Forestville Road. Alternatives: as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Hill?
I move that we authorize the city manager to negotiate a PA 425 agreement with Marquette Township for the long-year housing development on Forestville Road.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Stone?
Second, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hill, any discussion?
Yes, I have a number of questions about this development. It's 240 houses coming on to Wright Street, and as far as I understand, there's only going to be one road in and out, and, or maybe two roads in and out, and so I'm very concerned about the services, how the, if there are families living there, how these young people are going to get to school, and the question, questions about how water and sewer will be provided, and how both fire and public safety will be provided to this. It's, it seems to me, well, we certainly desperately need more housing, to put housing out on the very edges where there are no services versus being able to build housing closer in where it would be easier for families to get to school and easier for services to be provided. I, I'm greatly concerned, and I'm hoping in these negotiations, so, so I have those concerns. So in order to address those concerns, could, I don't know that we need to revise the motion, but I do want it to be, when this comes before us again, I would like there to be a very clear understanding of what, how those services will be provided, and, because I don't want to burden our current residents nor future residents with a development that's only going to add costs and might not, with the taxes generated, actually cover the costs of building the development. And I understand that most of this is actually in Marquette Township, but there's still potentially, I'm wondering if that can be identified, what costs might be coming back to the city. You always have to look at, actually, there's going to be some tax revenue, but as we have learned, the tax revenue system in Michigan doesn't necessarily pay for itself, and so are we going to be able to generate the revenue off of this development that will actually pay for the services to be provided, is my fundamental question.
Sure. And, thank you. So I just want to touch on the road. Question first, because that was, that was one concern that we had initially talked about. Where the developer is at in this process right now, they're still doing some due diligence work on this, and the road and the access, you know, points and the other road potential is part of that conversation. Now, with a development of this size and adding this amount of traffic potentially to that area, there would be essentially some, almost a triggering event for some improvements to be made potentially, and that would actually be at the, at the responsibility of the township or the road commission, the county road commission. So that is a little early to kind of talk about what that would look like for an improvement or to address those needs, because this, this agenda item is really to continue that conversation and to go into any negotiation for a 425 agreement. So a 425, Public Act 425, again, is that, that conditional land use transfer, and in this, in this instance, it will be transferring the parcel that is, is within the city, so the 29 to 34 acres that is currently in the city, it would be then transferred over into the township jurisdiction. The township is then responsible for providing the utilities, the water sewer, which is my understanding that they would be extending the water and sewer main to this development, as well as the public safety aspect. And obviously, there is a mutual aid agreement that we have with our townships, which means, yes, if there were a fire or any significant incident, we would also then respond as well. But it would be a service that is essentially provided by the township through those tax dollars or through their funding mechanisms because they, they have different millages. So the cost or the concern for the burden onto the city and will those tax revenues that essentially the city would hopefully see, would that cover it? To put it kind of plainly is, we don't have the financial risk because it's not our utilities or our responsibility for those services. We would, though, see somewhat of a benefit through a revenue agreement, which we would then be negotiating, and I don't have any, any leads on that because we haven't really started those, those conversations about negotiating the revenue component, but we essentially reap the benefits of housing development without having to front that cost for infrastructure and yet still see a portion of that revenue, which could potentially look at, be in the form of taxable value for the development that is on the city side times a specific rate, which would not, would not be equivalent to our rate necessarily, but an agreed-upon rate, which we would have to work through negotiations. I do want to make a point that the development, the type of development or the type of housing in this area is in line with what the township sees as, as a priority for them, or the type of housing that they generally see in the areas that they have. If the city did not participate, there would probably still be a portion developed in the township, but we would not see any of the benefits or, or essentially take any of the, the benefits of that or, you know, credit for that either.
Okay, so, so we will see some financial revenue from this project. The services will end up being the responsibility of the township. I think, you know, but they're still going to be them all needing to come into Marquette to go to school. They'd all need to be coming into Marquette for, well, and then, I guess, the, I don't know where the township's fire hall and stuff is, but, so I'm raising these now because, again, we're at the very beginning, and I want to make sure these questions are addressed because when this does come to us, so often, things come to us and they're already done, and so I want to make sure these issues are raised and understood, and also, you know, potentially for the benefit of the township residents who are going to be taking on a potentially a big responsibility for a very large service increase in their community. So, and then also, we're not going to have, you know, in a few years, the money that's been put into Wright Street's going to end when the nickel mine shuts down. So I'm, I'm just very concerned about the scale and scope of this development, being on the edge of town, and how it's going to impact our city, and I really want to make sure we, we push every piece of this before we agree to it. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse, do you have any discussion?
I would only point out that the purpose of continuing the discussion is to resolve the issues that Commissioner Hill was talking about. So while they all remain valid questions, that's the reason we continue to discuss the issue with the township is to come up with the best results to that, and those, of course, will come back to the commission for a decision at that basis. I would remind everybody that the development is being done on private property, both for the city and for the township, and it's, we have to understand that the township is a remarkably good planning organization, too, that I'm sure is looking at many of the same issues that we are, would be concerned with, and I think we give, need to give them the opportunity to develop the plan as might fit the situation that's developing. I think also that this is a very remarkable opportunity that we need to pursue and we need to do our very best to make work. There has been a long history of animosity between the township and the city. Many of the older residents may remember that. This is an opportunity to move forward together for a common purpose, and I think that's extraordinarily important that this commission keep that in mind as we pursue this opportunity. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion from the commission? Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that Commissioner Stonehouse said it quite well. This is essentially just making sure that we can get all the information that we need to make an informed decision, I feel, on the final 425 agreement. The city is, city commission is not committing to anything other than concluding negotiations with the township and bringing this back for a future vote of the city commission. If we have concerns or if individual commissioners feel that maybe some of the costs or negatives outweigh the benefits, then we can vote no on the 425 agreement at a future meeting. But for now, I think that it makes sense. I certainly don't feel informed enough to vote, to say whether I support or oppose this proposal at this point, so I'd like to see more information. I'd like to see, okay, we're talking about receiving a portion of tax revenue generated by the development. None of us actually knows what that means at this point, in real dollars and cents terms. We've heard that a significant portion of the site will be preserved for continuing conservation and recreation uses, but we don't know what a significant portion means. We've seen outlines of the property being discussed, but we haven't really seen site plans, and I would be interested in seeing all of that information and seeing answers to all of those questions before we vote on a future 425 agreement. For now, I'll just say that I do share some of Commissioner Hill's concerns, and I think it's important that they're addressed, but at this point, I'm comfortable moving forward, taking a very pre- But at this point, I'm comfortable moving forward, taking a very procedural vote right now just to get the information that I think we all need to make an informed decision.
Any other discussion? And we'll see if anyone else wants to speak before we go around again. Anyone else from the commission?
I just wanted to add, I would agree that there are some unanswered questions. I do see this as an opportunity to work with the township and provide some much-needed housing in our community, although it may not fall directly in the city lines. I think we need housing at every level. So, I know I took a no vote on a property not too far away a couple of meetings ago. And for me, the difference here is, well, first of all, we're still hashing out the details. But second of all, this is a lot more housing involved than just a few units. So, to me, that, that makes all the difference. I think it can make a real impact. Now, I do share some of Commissioner Hill's concerns, especially as it relates to transportation and schools. As most folks know, I also work in the school district, and this would be a pretty big increase to Superior Hill's Bothwell and our high schools potentially. So, I want to make sure that we're keeping that in mind with the planning, but I know that's what the planners do, so I'll leave it to them. Will come back before us again as well. But, go ahead, Commissioner Hill.
Well, can, can there be an interim step before we get to the point where it's just yes and no? Can we have a work session with the township, maybe, or some other way of understanding what's being proposed than just yes or no to the whole thing?
I'll ask our city manager to comment on that. I'm wondering about timelines and negotiations.
So, at this point, the details have not necessarily been worked out. Where the developers are and where the township, you know, kind of stands right now is, they don't, there's, there's a point of where you start spending more money to get the, you know, start developing the answers and really start, you know, moving forward. And, you know, that wasn't going to happen if this isn't even a consideration. The biggest, you know, hurdle at this, at this point was, is a 425 even something that the commission is willing to, to consider. So, when we start talking about what, you know, the revenue would look like or how many houses or, or what that is, that's, the revenue part is still part of the negotiating, which we, we will be doing and bringing that before the commission. I, I certainly think that there's some, some room for additional information to, to kind of come out. And I think that the developer and the township would certainly be willing to, to provide some information if, if they're able to at that point. Many steps are included in this process. They are seeking a PUD as well, and they have started that initial step in that process, but can continue further, and perhaps that's the avenue of getting more information. So, whether that's in the form of a work session or not, or just a presentation by the developer or a representative, that, that is something I would absolutely be willing to, to request.
And I was on the same wavelength, that, you know, it's not a rule it out because maybe it has a work session, but also maybe it's a presentation or depending on what the timeline and the rules are with the developer, so. Good question.
Yeah, I think, I, again, in the interest of actually understanding the project, not in the interest of stopping anything, but to understand what is being proposed and how they're going to address what will certainly be increased costs to the community. And that's good, we need the housing. I'm starting with, we need the housing. But, but this will come with other costs, and, and I think it's important that we understand how that's going to be addressed. Is fundamentally what I just want to be crystal clear on what I'm asking for here. And the, and particularly the traffic, I, I, I live in South Marquette. When school is in session, the cars that go down my street, and I'm, my street's not even the official street for Bothwell, is significant. And I literally can't leave my driveway. And so, and yes, it's, it's worse in the morning, a little, but there is some also in the afternoon. We're committing people to driving for miles. And I, I really want to make sure that we're making good decisions for the future about where we locate the actual housing that we desperately need.
Any other discussion before we go ahead and take a vote? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to our second public comment session of the evening, three minutes per person. Anyone for public comment? Anyone? Okay, seeing no public comment, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. We'll start off with Commissioner Bonzal.
I don't have any comments tonight, Your Honor, other than, once again, congratulations to Diver Don, and thanks so much for everything he's done for our community. And I'm glad that we were able to have an efficient and productive meeting tonight.
Commissioner Davis?
I have nothing this evening.
Commissioner Hanley?
Well, I will say, I think, I would like to encourage everyone to go to Blueberry Fest on Friday and Art on the Rocks on Saturday and Sunday, and that's all I have.
Pro Tem Mayor?
I think the only thing I had is I wanted to congratulate Dennis Stackowitz for, let's see what this is called. Being selected as this year's Planning Champion Award by the Michigan Association of Planning. That's all.
Commissioner Hill?
I want to congratulate the folks. Congratulations on your award. Congratulations, it is very exciting. And, and thanks for helping us go under the lake. It's really, it is really delightful to see the, the videos. Really appreciate that. Want to congratulate Hiawatha on their successful return to in-person festival. It was amazing. So many people got to reconnect. It was really a wonderful, wonderful event this past weekend. And we have more wonderful arts and cultural events coming up. And there, I believe there's a primary election next week.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I wanted to throw out an attaboy to Sonny Longtime. If anybody has not seen this publication that's come out talking about Marquette then and now, it's particularly valuable because it talks about the history of the city in terms of the structures. So, you can see what the Matson Park looked like before the Or Dock, or rather, before the, when it was originally a coal yard. You can see that with downtown. You can see that with the Lakeshore. It really is a good primer for people that haven't lived in Marquette for a considerable period of time to understand where we were and where we have come. And if you don't know where you were, you probably don't know where you are now. So, again, I encourage everybody to try and pick up a copy. Don't know where they're available, you got to beat up the bookstore and maybe even the library, too. But, again, Sonny's done a remarkable job with it. Thank you.
We have a lot of no comment. I have three tonight. I'm so sorry. I usually don't have a lot. Okay, one, Hiawatha Music Festival was fantastic. Those folks have done an incredible job bringing together folks from our community, from other communities. It's a cultural event, a music event, and it seems to me more, more than anything, a friendship event. If you go there knowing no one, you come out with a new friend. It's just, we were there for 12 hours on Saturday with, with our young kids, and we had a blast. So, thank you to those folks for organizing. Summer is in full swing, and I just wanted to say, after reading an article on MLive today about how hard service industry folks have it, to be extra kind to folks if you get a cup of coffee or go to a restaurant, maybe grab a drink at a bar, because right now it's tourist season here in Marquette, and they are slammed. So, I don't know, I think maybe give them an extra thank you and tip them an extra buck if you can because right now they're, they're really struggling to keep a smile on their face and keep things coming out the kitchen. And I know we all love going places and enjoying things at Blueberry Fest and other places, but that's part of it, is, is making sure we've got folks who are willing to help serve us. And then lastly, recently, we had a meeting with the NMU Board of Trustees as a few city commissioners in compliance with the OMA. It was myself, Commissioner Hill, and Commissioner Davis, along with our city manager, Karen Kovacs. And I think it was a really productive way to, you know, talk about collaboration on capital outlay projects, on shared vision and goals within the city that also overlaps with NMU. See a lot of positive outcomes to come from that and hopefully some future meetings as well. So, just wanted to share that with the community that is ongoing, and I'm very hopeful about our future relationship with them and continued relationship, really. All right, that's all I had. City Manager, Karen?
I just want to elaborate a little bit on that award that Dennis received. I enjoy, enjoy embarrassing you a little bit here, but it is, it is quite significant. And I don't want to take up too much time because I will share the article with the commission and obviously, you know, other resources as well. But the quote from, from, actually, somebody from the Michigan Land Bank Authority, who, you know, as you know, the authority has some unique, unique tools for development and actually has noticed Dennis and his work. And the quote reads, "Dennis's work has garnered statewide attention and has been useful and tangible demonstration, not only for Marquette, but as an example for present-day project work across the entire upper peninsula." And I think it actually even goes further than that because there's been many instances where Dennis has, has been, you know, working with the Michigan State University Extension Office and a couple of other associations. Excuse me, I'm getting choked up. Not really. My beaver snack, but, sorry. But he has been, he has been, he has, he has spoken at many of these events to really talk about, present, and I would say brag about the, the many efforts that the city has done to address several key areas, and one of them being housing. So, I really, I really commend Dennis on this, this great achievement, and it is really a great star for even just the city and for our staff as well. So, we really do rely on you for your guidance and your leadership, and I really, I just want to say thank you and great job. This is a huge accomplishment for you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned at 6:40 p.m.